We're already running a little bit late. I'm gonna go ahead and call the April 27th meeting to order. I ask everyone to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I hopefully see the flag in my experience.
To the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. We're seeing the end of these kind of things. We'll see what happens. Okay, so roll call.
Trustee Saturn.
Present.
Trustee Niradowski.
Present.
Trustee Graffia.
Present.
Trustee Keenly.
Present.
And Supervisor Sweeney.
Present. Okay, any public comments? Seeing none, we'll move on to item D, the consent agenda. You've had a chance to review the bills and look at the other reports. Are there any items that any board member would like removed from the consent agenda?
No.
Seeing and hearing none, I will accept a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Moved by trustee Graffia.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Saturn. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Trustee Saturn.
Aye.
Trustee Niradowski.
Aye.
Trustee Graffia.
Aye.
Trustee Keenly.
Aye.
Supervisor Sweeney.
Aye. Okay, motion carries. Okay, we have one item on our presentations. We had not had an opportunity.
Don't you have the minutes?
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. Thank you. Skipping right over. Trying to make up for time. Item E, discussion of potential action on approval of minutes. We have the March 30th public hearing to account for the services and sewer budgets, the March 30th Record Board meeting, and then the April 6th Board meeting. Any questions or concerns about those minutes?
No.
Hearing none, can I have a motion to approve those three sets of minutes?
So moved.
Moved by trustee Saturn.
I'll second.
Seconded by trustee Niradowski. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Trustee Saturn.
Aye.
Trustee Niradowski.
Aye.
Trustee Graffia.
Aye.
Trustee Keenly.
Aye.
And Supervisor Sweeney.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, now on to presentations. We have Amanda from Fellowship Housing. The last couple of months, unfortunately, we weren't able to make it work, but fortunately she can be here tonight. Amanda, can you share your last name? I apologize, I don't have it in front of me.
Yeah, it's Woods, W-O-O-D-S.
Doesn't get any easier than that. With an S. So thank you for being here and bearing with us with this technology. So Fellowship Housing was something that the board wanted to, since we were coming up on the beginning of the budget year. We set aside funds in anticipation of hearing from Fellowship Housing, just in case it was an organization the board did want to fund. So just to refresh everybody's memory on that point. So before we took any further action, of course, since Fellowship Housing is a new organization, we put in funds from the township. We wanted to make sure we learned about Fellowship Housing, and that's why Amanda's here. So Amanda, we'll give you the floor. If you want to take some time, maybe 10 minutes or so. You're the only presentation, so if you go a little bit beyond that, that's okay too. But after that, we'll just leave some time to ask you some questions so we can get a better understanding of what your organization does, and we'll go from there. So the floor is yours.
Wonderful. Well, thank you for having me, everybody. And this is a wonderful meeting for me because I have a two-month-old. So it's nice to be able to kind of get away and have a meeting and talk to people. But so Fellowship Housing, we work specifically with single moms who are caught in the gap. These are women who are working full-time. They are working incredibly hard. They don't want to rely on assistance from outside sources. They want to be sustainable themselves and for their families. But they don't make enough money to really find that thriving place, and they make too much money to qualify for many services. And we have found, as an example, that a lot of the women that are contacting us, they are employed full-time, they're making about $40,000. But as you know, in the northwest suburbs, if you're renting an apartment, that could take almost half of your income. And whenever you're looking at percentages like that, just having that much of your income go towards housing, you're not going to be able to survive very long in a way that's as thriving and fully functional as one might hope. So that's where Fellowship Housing steps in. We work with the families. We get them stably housed, and we actually provide them subsidized rent. So they are responsible for abortion. They have some skin in the game there. But we make sure that they can spend as much as possible going towards debt, going towards any savings that they need to be able to build up so that they can have long-term stability. As I'm sure a lot of you know, whenever you're looking at the financial situation of someone and their credit score is in 500s, 400s, a lot of people don't want to rent to them. And so they are in this situation where they aren't able to have housing that is sustainable. So the great news is that when they're in our program, they are working incredibly hard. And I don't say that lightly. These are women who are working the family advocate to go through their bank statements with a fine tooth comb and find how can they save as much money as possible? Is there any area where they need to really reevaluate how they're spending? Could they be doing smarter here? And really going after their debt. They want this future for their children to be something that they can be proud of, and they want their kids to have a different situation than maybe what they had growing up. And so at the end of our program, I'm very excited to be able to share that 88% go on to housing of their choice. And what I mean by that is they are able to rent on their own without any sort of outside assistance. And 44% of our moms actually purchase a home, which is amazing to think that they were in an at-risk-of-home-impairment situation just two years before, and at the end of that, they have a permanent home. One of her moms, I have to tell you this story. She got into her home, they had just closed down the house, and she was showing it to her boys who were elementary school age. And they were so excited. They started running around the house and like rolling around on the floor, and they were like, "This is ours. This is ours." They couldn't believe it. And so they just kept saying, "You're the best mom ever." And so to know that that situation can be possible for other families, we want to ensure that any motivated single mom is able to be found, she's empowered and equipped to be able to have that future that she wants. So I know that you have seen our proposal requesting funding to help support a family that's in our program to be able to stay for the full two years. And then also, I believe you have a handout as well that I had sent to Paul that lists a little bit more detail. So that actually, that handout is our fresh-off-the-press statistics. We just did it from 2019 numbers. And so you get to see them. I actually haven't shared that with anyone else in the first group that gets to see it. And so the moms in our program, on average, they're increasing their savings in just two years by $6,800. They are increasing their income by $8,300. They're increasing their credit score by 68 points. They are decreasing their debt by over $20,000. And they're able to have that long-term sustainability. So I would love to know more about what questions you guys have and have more conversation around that. I believe our proposal really gives a good understanding of what our program looks like. So just want to hear from you.
How many mothers or single mothers are in the program? And how many of them are in the Elk Grove Township area?
Yeah, that's a great question. So we are able to support 24 moms at any given time. And we have a couple of families in our program right now that are specifically from Elk Grove Township.
How do the moms find you, or how do you find them?
Yes, wonderful question. So it's kind of a funny answer. So we have two ways that the majority of people are finding us. One is by word of mouth. So either a mom that has been in our program or someone who has known about us for a while. The other is they're actually doing Google searches for single mom help. And we are one of the top responses that people are finding out about us.
How many moms do you have in the program at one time?
24.
Okay.
Okay, does any other trustee have questions for Amanda?
No.
Amanda, what's your position?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear that. Could you?
Your position with Fellowship Housing?
Oh, my position is I'm the associate director.
Associate director. So this is a... So if there's no other questions for Amanda, Amanda, anything else you'd like to add?
No, just we're excited to be able to get more involved in the Elk Grove community and really help expand, to be able to reach families that are in need there, so.
Yeah, thanks for all the info you put on your application.
Amanda, where is your grant located?
Hoffman Estates.
And just to refresh our memory, I had $5,000 if you request.
Yes.
Any other questions, George? All right, this is a little bit different because we've already essentially budgeted for these dollars. At least in my type here, we had never done that in anticipation of hearing Fellowship Housing. So because it's in the budget, I do have the flexibility to disperse those funds. But I just wanted to have on record and find out if I will go ahead and disperse those funds unless there's an objection from a board member.
No objection.
No objection, yeah.
Hey, Dick, Bob, can I... Bob and Dale, can I audibly hear from you? Or now you have an objection?
No objection.
All right, Amanda, well, you're welcome to say a few questions during the meeting. But other than that, we will be back in touch with you, and your full grant will be awarded.
Thank you so much. This is wonderful.
Thank you, Amanda.
Thank you. Have a great evening. Rest of your meeting.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I'm sorry. Item G, moving on to reports. The assessors' report. Connie?
You've gotten my written report. I have been trying my very best to determine some of the answers to the questions that I posed. I need to impress on you that, and prefacing this so that you have context, what is going to happen is we were supposed to be open for appeals the 6th of May. That has been put off. We now do not know when we are going to be open. We have also been told that we are not going to be open 45 or 40 days, but we will be open 30 days. We have also been told there will be absolutely no re-review for any of the applicants that are denied. Along with that, we have been told that the county is going to virtually put on a factor on every township in response to the COVID economic decline. My problem with this is multifold. First of all, I don't know what metric they're going to use. I do know it's going to be an individual township factor. You need to understand that if this factor is put on and the assessed values are lowered, what happens? The tax rate goes up. Also, whether or not the Illinois Department of Revenue agrees with this factor, the equalizer has the potential of going up. Now, that, excuse me, that being said, this is going to cause massive confusion because at the end of our appeal period, a letter to every single property owner in Elk Grove Township is going to be sent saying, "A factor has been put on, and your assessed value has been lowered." They're going to wonder why, and they're not going to understand the ramifications because those ramifications will not be seen until the second installment of 2021. So you can understand the impact of the number of taxpayers that are going to avail themselves of our services. This could be, this could be worse than last year. And last year was a nightmare when they increased our condominiums erroneously by over 100%. I felt that you had to be aware of this. It's not being widely publicized. But my concern is, what is this metric that they're going to apply to Elk Grove Township? We have an extraordinarily large number of commercial and industrial. I can only assume that they're going to focus on them because of the disruption in the economy. So you can understand my concern right now on where they're squeezing the balloon and how this is going to affect our residential taxpayers. But I felt that you should be aware of this, and I am trying. Right now, if you go on the assessors' website, our opening date, all it says is revised. Excuse me. So we don't know when we're going to be open, and we don't know when we're going to, and actually, how we're going to process this. It has always been our procedure that every year, we notify all of our taxpayers, the ones we have emails and phone numbers for, that they have the right to appeal, whether they've gotten a special notification of reassessment or not. And generally, those special reassessments are, you know, permits, additions, that sort of thing, where you see the assessed value change. However, we feel almost a moral obligation to say, you know, "You need to come in and appeal" because the last time you appealed with the county, numbers changed. Whether you got a successful appeal or an unsuccessful appeal, perhaps you went to board of review. Many people did. Numbers change. So perhaps you are in a position now to make another appeal to the county based on the closing figures of the board of review. That's going to create an influx of people coming in. And then God only knows what's going to happen when they get this reassessment notice. So you can understand my concerns at this point. We don't know when it's going to be dropped on us. And right now, trying to determine what the metrics are going to be on how they're going to look at our jurisdiction is extraordinarily concerning.
Connie, a couple of questions.
Any questions?
Connie, a couple of questions. Couple of questions. Number one, is the...
I can barely hear you, George. So if you could tell maybe Mike, and Mike could pass it on.
Yeah, it's not gonna... Can you hear me better if I get over by his table here and I catch COVID from him? Can you hear me now, Connie?
Yeah, I've got it as high as I can get it. Go ahead, George.
I guess my mic doesn't work. First of all, what I wanted to make sure they hear you saying is that obviously, the amount of funds that have to be generated won't change. So a change in the assessed value doesn't mean that you'll get a reduction in your taxes. Possibly even with the increased demands, it may actually go up. Okay, and then is there any indication they're going to shift? This would be the only way that you'd maybe see a change. Are they, any indication they're going to shift more of the burden commercial or more of the burden residential?
That's an excellent question, George. And I think, I hate to think that there's a political part to this because obviously during our try, our commercial and industrial was hit extraordinarily hard. And their appeal process now has actually become a Gordian knot. They've got to start producing P&Is for the assessor, which has never been requested before so that the assessor can put on, you know, a rate... And I'm saying, excuse me, but I've just lost the, you know... But a compiled rate to determine value off of income. I'm finding this extremely concerning on so many levels. We don't deal with commercial and industrial, but we are not insensitive to what has been going on in the last year. And it's got to be a great concern to the township, to the various villages, particularly Elk Grove, on how this is going to play out.
What...
I don't even want to postulate a, you know, a a political scenario here. But you've got a lot of commercial and industrial just going, "Hey, we can't handle this anymore."
So your indication would be a shift, it would shift from commercial to more residential?
I'm sorry, George, but I couldn't understand that.
I said, so are you saying that you would potentially see a shift in the burden from commercial, since they've been under such pressure, to more residential?
You know, I've always told you that when they squeeze the balloon on one side, it goes on, you know, it increases on the other side. It depends on the metric. From what I've been able to discern, and quite frankly, this has been any number of phone calls that have been vague at best. If they're doing it township by township, I've got to be concerned that if they've realized that they have over-assessed commercial and industrial, the burden's going to fall to residential. Now, here's the thing. If these residential customers see that their assessed values are going down, they're not, they're going to go, you know, "Hey, this is great", until they get that second installment in 2021.
Okay, and you also indicated, I thought you indicated at one point when we talked, that they will not be using comps. This will just be a general reassessment of where they think... I mean, how are they determining, how are they, what is this COVID component? And how are they actually assessing then?
We have not been given any information on that whatsoever. And from my point of view, as an assessment professional, how in the world do you put a factor on something that has not concluded? That's insane. We seem to be, you know, in the middle, two-thirds of the way. Who knows how far we are into this? And how do you put, in the next couple of weeks, couple of months, a factor that is supposed to be accurate? To me, that's where my skepticism rises to all times high. It's one thing to look back at sales, to look back, even at income-producing properties, and see that vacancy rates have declined and, you know, that sort of thing. We don't even have that data at this point.
Okay, thank you.
I just had one question. Is that you said there's no review for those who are denied their appeals? Is that legal to say you can't have review for them?
That is the information that we have been given. Generally speaking, you have a 30-day window to appeal. Once you get that letter, you have X amount of time, and it changes. I mean, by the time our taxpayers got it last time, most of them were outside of the window, and they hadn't even been notified yet. So the frustration is extraordinarily high. Now they are saying, on this particular situation, after we have gone through the appeal period, there will be no re-review. That was the information I have received from the county. And it's after they do that that they will put the factor on and send out the letters to every property owner in Elk Grove Township as to what their new level of assessment is.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions for Connie? All right, George, clerk's report, George.
No, I have no report this time.
All right, no report from George. Highway Commissioners Report, Art. Art, Highway Commissioners Report. Can you hear me, Art?
Have a written report.
It's hard to hear you.
It's hard to hear me?
That's better.
Art, can you hear me? Your report.
I can hear you.
All right, your report.
Barely. Okay. Ready for my report?
Yes.
I written. We did receive a notice from... And we have the IGA for Melmore Drive. Okay. Anything better?
Yeah.
There was a letter we did go to the village. And they completed the application. Our share of our $91,970.
Some other written report. Okay. Hold on, hold on one second, everybody. Technically a little difficult.
I think if they held you to the eye total, Art's talking, that might help.
Hold on, one second, one second. Microphone. Yes. What's that? What's that? My computer.
Oh, Jesus.
What is that? Volume's all the way down. Okay.
When we did this with school, we had everyone turn off the microphone and stop when they talk.
Okay, well, okay, how does it sound now?
Hello? Can you hear me now?
Yeah, we can hear you, Art.
I can hear you, Art.
I can hear you. Well, you get the report.
Keep stillin' it.
All right, we're just gonna have to power through this because... All right, we're just going to have to power through this because, um, just says what it is. Everybody can hear me?
Yes.
All right, Art, go ahead.
Well, the, uh, just my report, um, I don't really think it's.
Art and Dale, are you in the same room?
I can't hear you too well, huh?
Oh.
No, uh.
Go ahead, Art. Are you done?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, Jordan wants to know if he can use your written report for the minutes.
Yes.
All right. Okay, um, what do you need me to do, Dan? I'm getting feedback now. I can power through it, it's not a big deal, but everybody can still hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay. All right, Supervisors Reports, I don't have much, just to let you know that in the next week or so, week to 10 days, we'll be having a follow-up construction meeting. This will be our final one. We'll recap everything, close everything out and sign off. There's a few, just, you know, wrap up things in the building to take care of. A few stained doors that we're waiting to come in for a couple offices and a couple other small items that are being wrapped up kind of daily. So those should be finishing up pretty quick here. And then we'll have our final construction meeting and get all those final numbers in. So any questions for me?
No.
No.
All right. No correspondence, old business, there is none. So under new business, there are three items as we continue to put some final touches on the building before we can hopefully coast for a while. The first item is the landscape design. Let me pull this up. Okay. So just to, I have it up on the screen, hopefully everybody can see it. It's also in your board packet. This is kind of a grayed-out version of the property. There's also a colored version in your packet I have here. I should have, yeah, it's not as, um, as it goes into some more detail. Item one, talking about going around the front of the building on the east parking lot and then around the main portion of the building. That's item one. Item two is just a basic concept for our, the monument sign. We'll be talking about that as well. But the, just to kind of give you some background on what we're doing, this, the grounds needed a lot of TLC. We had Izzy contact. We actually went out to a bunch of different network contacts in the community through GOA and asked for any recommendations for landscapers. We got six back, six recommendations back. Isabella not only called, but made contact with all six. They all said, send us information on what you're looking for, we'll be in touch, we'll come out to the site. Only one reached out, only one reached out, came back, which was Ground Pros. Izzy followed up with the other five again and heard nothing. And actually, so that going on for a couple of weeks and getting into the season we're in and needing to get some work done, I decided to at least do the cleanup. And what do we do? We did the cleanup and some of the restoration work we had to do from some of the areas that we, that were dug up from when we reduced the water lines from two to one and some other areas. So the restoration work, some cleanup work and some manicure work that were seasonal. The last part of that was the bigger ticket item was the actual landscape design. And just to kind of clean and freshen things up. So we actually didn't hear from a second company, I think, until like last Friday. Izzy had sent them information on, they requested some more information about what we were looking for. Actually, it was the middle of the week last week. Izzy sent them the information and we still have yet to hear from them. So I don't know what's going on in the world as far as, and I know a lot of things are, things are going on with this pandemic. But at the end of the day, after contacting six landscapers, Ground Pros was the only one that got back to us. So, so far, if you've seen the property, they've done a fantastic job cleaning it up. And then they gave us this proposal for landscaping. The first part, item one, was the landscape renovation. They were recommending their items here are $20,000. I think that's a top line item if we were to approve this. I believe I could go back to Stacy from Ground Pros and work with her to reduce this even further. I don't know if we need all of these things, but this is the, the top end there of what she was recommending. And then the second item is what she would be recommending for monument sign landscaping based on just some, just some ideas that we presented to her. You can see that is in the, um, the, you can see that that's in the proposal as well. We just, we wanted to know what that, what that would look like. She did a mock-up with one of the signs we had mocked up, so you can kind of see that in the packet too. So you've seen, in addition to that, you've seen the, basically the plant or flower palette with all the items that she's recommending, like I said, to kind of freshen things up. And like I said, that 20,000 would essentially be the top line. I think there's some additional things we could probably do to work with what we have. Maybe add some additional things next year, but I think there's some room to reduce that $20,000, so. Any questions about that first item and the landscape design? I hired them for the cleanup and restoration for some of the areas that we needed to restore. And then this is the landscape design, correct?
It looks very nice.
There was five, five other ones, nobody.
But the one that responded.
The one that responded last week, again, they, they, we told them what we wanted and they have yet to return a call, call back, ask questions, anything. And that was several weeks ago. We started contacting them about three and a half weeks ago. We started contacting landscapers. Any questions?
No.
Thoughts about moving forward with this landscape design?
Uh, how would you reduce the 20,000? Just cut back on some of the shrub, the shrubbery and plants?
I'll entertain a motion to approve the landscape design not to exceed $20,000.
Mike, can you hear me?
I'm not, I don't, I don't hear anybody.
Can't hear anyone?
Suluon's talking and I don't hear anybody.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you, can you hear me?
I can hear you now.
Oh, you can hear me?
Yep.
Okay, I know my question was, I think it looks very nice. I just wondered, when you said it could be less than 20,000, would that be just cutting back some of the shrubbery? Is that what you would do for that?
That's what I, right, that's what I, I would be anticipating, yes.
I just asked that because the signs are very nice, they're also very expensive. So I don't know if we want to do that or if we want to spend the 20.
What was that, Suluon? I didn't catch the thing about the signs?
I just said, I didn't know if, I mean, the signs are super nice, they're also expensive. So I didn't know if we'd want to cut back at all on landscaping or if we'd want to leave it as is.
Leave, leave what is is? I'm, I'm.
The landscaping at 20,000.
Oh, to cut back on the, the proposal, okay.
Right, yeah.
What was your comment, George?
Can't hear you.
We're, can you hear me?
We can hear you, not George.
Can't hear George.
All right, yes, we're just talking, George was asking if we were just talking about item one right now and I told him, yes.
Okay. Well, you, you want a motion that it would not exceed $20,000.
Right, I mean.
And you'll, and you'll try to make adjustments as it goes, as it goes along.
Right, I would work to adjust that downward. Some other things that I wanted to possibly incorporate, we have a variety of landscape rock. Probably 10 or 15 rocks, nice-sized rocks in the back of the property that were left by the village. Don't tell anybody that we're, we're keeping now, they're ours. So to see if we can, since we own them, incorporate that and be able to use those as well to kind of space out some of the landscaping and save some money there as well if we were to move forward on this option.
Sounds good.
Uh, so moved.
Moved, moved to, to move forward on this proposal not to exceed 20,000?
You said you, you wanted a motion not to exceed $20,000 and I'm giving you the motion.
Okay, move by Trustee Ann Grafia, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Saturn. Any discussion? Roll call, all right, I'm going to call it since we're having trouble with the, the speaker, so, uh, Trustee Saturn?
Aye.
Trustee Nuerdowski?
Aye.
Trustee Ann Grafia?
Aye.
Trustee Keenley?
Aye.
Okay, and I vote aye. The ayes have it. Motion is approved, okay. And I will keep you posted on what we come up with as far as those, those dollars, the cost of the final landscape design. The second item is the, I can scroll here. This is just one potential idea. I guess I kind of forget about the sign, because the sign we have to talk about. She was just plugging in a mock-up of something that we had showed her just to kind of give us an idea of what her monument, design, landscaping design would look like. So it's on the screen now, that brick with the, um, the sod. I don't know anybody's thoughts there. Kind of share my thoughts, there's a couple of things. I think we have a little bit more time on the sign. I, I guess there's a lot of different things you can do on the brick. My big, my big push with everything that we're doing with the sign and everything else that the, the village incorporates a lot of brick into their signs. I kind of wanted to stay away from that kind of Prairie-style look. Not that this looks bad, I think it looks very nice. But I'm actually almost, I'm okay with actually having the sign in the, in the ground, like lower to ground level with it being dug out with sod around it as opposed to having the brick. And then we might even be able to put flowers and plants around that in the actual dirt as opposed to having the brick.
So you just would not have that, the planter at all, just have a sign?
Me, I, I think it would look, I think it would look really good. I think the money would be better spent if you had a trench dug out around the sign, sod put in, not sod, mulch, that rich, deep brown mulch and some flowers planted around it. I think that would be a better look. I, I just, I'd like to get away from the brick. I think, just quite honestly, I mean, I don't think we need to spend the money and I think there's, just visually, there's a lot of, it looks a lot like, at least that brick design looks a lot like what the village does.
I agree, I would rather use the money on having a sign that would light up or something else, but yeah.
One of the, one of the big signs, yeah, I'll, I'll go through the signs, one of the signs does light up and we can talk about that when we get there. So, um, so I don't know what the cost would be to just trench the, where the sign would go. But I can find out and we can discuss that at a later date. Or if you're okay with going with that idea, just to have the ground entrenched out and sodded. I would just, not sodded, mulched, I would just have to get a price for that.
I don't have a problem with that, but I'd like a price on it.
Yeah, I'm not, I won't move forward, I'm just saying I'd have to get a price on it.
Okay.
Okay? Dick or Dale?
No, I'm okay with it too, I like, I like your idea there.
Here it is.
Without the extra, yeah, sorry, I, I kept trying, I finally got it. Um, yeah, if, I, I didn't know if that planter thingy there, that, that would come out of this budget, that would come out of the sign budget and not out of the shrub, shrubbery budget. But if it doesn't, if, you know, the, the fact that, the, the proposal there, just to skip it and just have just a sign, I like that idea too, so I'm pretty open.
And I'll, I'll get some, I'll get some pricing to just have it trenched and mulched and then, you know, we can have a basic, kind of a basic price and then what it might cost to add some, some plants to add some color as well. And I'll, I'll bring that back to the board.
Yeah, but this picture here is, I really like this because obviously it's got all the shrubbery that, you know, you, you photoshopped in there and stuff and that really looks nice too. So it's going to look great when it's all done.
Yeah, that, I mean, that does, that does look nice, yes. All right, so right now we'll skip item two and I'll have, come back with another idea, eliminating the brick and just trenching it out and see what that prices. All right, um, all right, the building, the building signage, I'll pull that up.
There's somebody talking in the background. Anyway. Okay.
Yeah, if you have something going on, if you can, in the background, if you can just mute your phone, that'd be great. Okay, so based on just some, just some informal conversations that we've had, I think, the board and just what some of the signage requires. Sorry, Mike, give me, my son's in the background here, I think he's looking for the bathroom, so. Giving him the thumbs up to, to go.
Somebody help that boy.
Yeah, I'd say good luck in that place, you didn't search for an hour before you find one.
Well, he's, he's, he's probably spent, he's probably spent more hours than all of you combined, I guarantee. He's been here doing schoolwork and everything else, so he's been, he's been spending a lot of hours here. So he, he likes to come in here and run around with Dad, so. All right, so going back, the two, we have the west and east entrance post and panel signs, 60 inches off the ground, five feet off the ground, three feet wide, two feet, the, the signs themselves are two feet tall and they identify the items, the, the services on either entrance. Okay? So we have that there, let's go through these. And then these are the two signs, we thought them, just to use the Elk Grove Township green, pretty simple. Like I said, these are just mock-ups that they've done just based on feedback that we've given, Divine Signs. Again, there was another, there were several companies that we sought out. We heard from two, Divine Signs being one. Another company, these, Divine and another company have come out, given us some initial feedback and then the other company just fell off. We don't know what happened to them. And then there's, I'll come back to that pricing. Just to give you an idea, this, this is one mock-up. We wanted to go some, with something, a nice, solid-looking monument sign. This was the initial mock-up that they made, a green aluminum, a two-part base with a little. looking monument sign, this was the initial mockup that they made, a green aluminum, a two-part base with a little separation in the middle, a white background, this particular sign, it's eight foot wide, and four, is this, this one's four feet tall, right? I don't have the numbers right in front of me. Tall. Okay, I'm sorry, so this, this one's eight foot wide, five foot tall, and two feet deep, it's internally lighted, has the white, which is like a Plexi glass, and the sign printed on there, the address below with the phone number. Using the same color, same color scheme with the white, the green on the white, this is a tall sign, this is a five foot. I'm sorry, this is a where's the numbers here? Do you have the numbers in front of you, I'm sorry, Paul? The tall sign, like, where? What's that? The, the vertical sign, the vertical sign, it's, oh, the vertical sign is forty-eight forty-eight inches wide and seven feet tall. Six feet tall, sorry, and twelve inch, twelve inches deep, a foot deep. And well, and then it has the address there. Just giving you an idea, I asked for them to give me some idea of what it would be for landscaping purposes, from the ground to that six hundred landmire, it was just under fourteen inches. Let me see. Alright. Coming back, alright, and then this is what I asked them to do, I asked them to reverse the color, so the sign would be a solid, solid green, and then the cutouts would be white. The vertical sign, the six foot tall, four foot wide sign, that is not backlit, that's not internally lit. We can have lights, lights on them, we can have lights installed to shine on the sign, that's not an issue. That's, that's a fifty-nine hundred dollar sign, and then the reverse on the large sign, if I can see, I guess this is the reverse. I was just looking at the, this, the size from the bottom, or the height from the bottom of the sign. So this is the reverse on the eight foot wide, five foot tall sign. And this one is internally lit. Pricing here is, the pricing on this sign, it's one-sided, outdoor lighted for fifteen thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars. And then this sign, the vertical sign is fifty-nine hundred. And then going back to the other signs. The post and panel signs, as I said, they're five feet tall, three feet wide, two feet, the actual sign's two feet tall. The total price for the two signs is thirteen hundred and seventy dollars. Would the, the food pantry wall sign, three hundred and thirty dollars. The main parking lot township hall sign is three hundred and thirty dollars. And then the last part was the vinyl graphics, essentially that frosted look on several of the doors. We'll be doing, just recommending the east entrance door. The assessors entry to the assessors office, the food pantry glass door, and the township hall entrance door. And this is just a couple examples of how the, the sign company mocked it up. So this would be the front door, the hours of operation. We anticipate potentially a large logo, and then underneath the assessors office, a large logo, and then underneath says the food pantry, same thing with the township hall, same thing with the hours of operation.
Mike, the signs, the directional signs are all exterior signs, right?
The directional signs are, you have the post and panel, and then you have the I think that's how they identified them, the post, yeah.
Food pantry.
Directional signs are exterior, and the food pantry wall sign is external, the main parking lot wall sign is external. And then the monument signs are external, yes.
Will there be any directional, interior directional signs?
I'm sorry?
Will there be any interior directional signs?
Not at the moment.
Do the directional signs, they can be added to, additional things could be added to.
And the post and panel, yes.
On the on the monument sign, some of them that you gave us had the phone number, some of them don't, is that?
Yeah, I mean, the, there's, there wasn't, on the vertical sign, there wasn't room. On the horizontal sign. You know. I asked them, one version, I asked them to take it off, because I, I don't think it's really necessary to have the phone number on there, not to mention the fact that there's we don't just have one phone number anymore, we have social service phone number, we have the food pantry phone number, we have adult and family counseling phone number, the main number. And, and I think there's if we did some landscaping around the sign, it's gonna end up getting swallowed up by that anyway, so I think the phone number doesn't really serve a purpose on that particular sign, or any of the monument signs themselves.
The monument signs are all one-sided?
These ones are.
Well, just, I just have a question, when I was looking at this picture, it looks very nice, but I wondered if the sign, if it was two-sided, if it was turned horizontally from the way it is, then people from both sides could see it.
Yeah. So a couple, a couple things about that, it's a good point. So a couple things to think about when it comes to a monument sign, and then I'll talk about the specific property. So, when you're talking about the size signs that we're looking at, and you're driving down Landmire, you're not going to miss the signs, whether they're perpendicular to Landmire or parallel, they're very sizable signs. We have the directional signs as well, the post and panel. But from, my argument would be, we have a wide building. And when you're driving down Landmire, and you have signs like that, yes, it's for information to show that we're here, it's for information to show the address, but it's also to establish a presence. And I, I think they're just a better appearance, to me, with the wide building, with the signs, I'm kind of centered on the building. That it, to me, it looks better, I don't think there's, I just don't see there being an issue with the sign being visible. If it were to be parallel to Landmire. Number two is for the specific property. This, the property slants back towards the building. So from the sidewalk back towards the building, it slopes back. And, you know, I think then, there's, you have some more difficult things managing, I mean, it can be done, I mean, it's not like we're the first property to have a sloped landscape, but especially if we went with the wider sign, I mean, I guess it wouldn't be that big of a deal to deal with the slope with the narrower vertical sign. But if we went with the larger eight foot wide sign, the slope back would be more difficult. But I don't think vision, I really don't, with these, the kind of signs we're talking about, visibility being perpendicular or parallel is going to be an issue at all. And then there would be, and then there would be a cost addition, obviously, it wouldn't be it would be proportional to just cut in, you know, the, the sign on the back as well, which we could do, these were just some initial mockups.
And if we put lighting on them, even if they weren't lit, they would be, it would be lit up enough.
The wide, the wide sign, the eight foot wide sign is internally lit, at least the proposal here, it's internally lit. The vertical sign, the six foot tall by four feet wide sign is not.
So the tall one's about six thousand, and the wide one's about fifteen thousand.
Just under sixteen, right. Do you want to, does any, I mean, are there, how about the post and panels, are any issues with the post and panel signs?
No.
Any issues with the wall, the wall signs for the food pantry and township hall?
No. No.
How about the vinyl graphics for the doors?
No.
Okay.
The only thing with the-
Okay, just kind of want to zero in on what, what some of the issues are, so.
I don't know if we'd want to write Elk Grove Township on the top of the post and panel signs, if people reach those signs first, coming from either way.
Say, I'm sorry, say that one more time?
On the post and panel signs, I don't know if we'd want to just above it put Elk Grove Township. So if people reached the east or west entrance, they would know they, where they were. Just a thought.
So, to take, to take, on top of west, east entrance, or in place of?
On top of.
On top?
Above it, yeah.
As opposed to the seal, like he's got on the screen there?
Yeah, well, just if it was Elk Grove Township in the same size letters as west and east entrance above it, it would be easy to see, but just a suggestion, just, we're a new, you know, we're a new location, so and you can't drive along and see the numbers of any buildings on either side of you to know you're almost there. You know what I'm saying? Because we're just kind of by ourselves there. Just a suggestion, either way is good.
Okay.
Other, other thoughts? Alright, let's go back to the monument sign. Well, let me go back to the post and panel signs, how does everybody feel about putting Elk Grove Township on the top?
It might be too much.
You, would it help if we made, see if they could incorporate that, make, incorporate the logo, make it larger?
Yeah, I would say.
That's a good idea.
So we could probably we could probably shift the east and entrance, east entrance and west entrance down and make the logo bigger, and center it maybe?
Sounds good.
If that's, if that sounds like something
First you want to put the logo on the bottom.
Say that again?
Maybe you want to put the logo on the bottom of it? Make it a large logo on the bottom, underneath the words?
With, did you say with the words?
Under the words.
Oh, under the words.
Yeah, you could even ask the, the sign people if they had a suggestion of a way to, you know, make it better and a good place to put it.
So do we want to wait on these signs then?
I would say so.
Oh, I don't want to wait. I think it'd be good to get them.
Well, maybe we should get a mockup.
It just matters how much discretion you want to give me, I guess, at this point.
Without having, without having seen it with, you know, Elk Grove over it, or the seal larger, or the top or at the bottom, you know, I they're wonderful suggestions, but I'd have to see it.
Okay.
I'd be fine with you talking to the sign people in whatever way they thought it looked best, but I, I trust your discretion on it, but either way is fine, because I would like to see them, I would like to see us getting the signs soon.
So Mike, do you want to motion on it?
Well I'd like to see what the board feels comfortable voting on tonight, and we can package all of that together. And we can, we can vote on that, and then any remaining items, we can, we can deal with that, so.
So you want to discuss the monument sign and put it all together?
Well, that's, I mean, we can vote however you want, I'm just saying, I mean, if we want to package these things together, I mean, we could, we could vote on these three things, and then go back to the monument sign if you want.
If people don't feel comfortable voting on the post signs with a change, without seeing them, I would rather go with the ones that we have in front of us to get them in soon.
Well, then if we want to get them in soon, then we should just vote on the package.
Right.
Okay.
As is.
Well, we could always wait on those post signs, and you get mockups, so we can see what they look like, and then we can vote on it later.
We could? So let me, so let's, let's step back here, the wall signs, is everybody okay with the wall signs?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm fine with them.
The one change on the indoor vinyl signs, or the vinyl signs. The I just wanted to be clear that on the town hall food pantry and assessors door, the recommendation I was making was to have Elk Grove Township, how it is, on like the post and panel at the top of the logo. The logo being centered and larger. So you have Elk Grove Township wrapped above the logo, the logo larger, and then underneath would be assessors office, food pantry, township hall. We just haven't had, we didn't, we just didn't get a rendering in time to present that option, but
Sounds good.
That was the one I was going to recommend, recommend, I just hadn't had a chance, they hadn't gotten back to us. Is everybody okay with that, if we did, if we went that route?
Sounds good.
Yeah.
Yeah, it sounds good to me, too.
It sounds good.
Okay. Alright, so the wall sign, we're good with the vinyl graphic, alright. Correct. Yeah, there would be no reason to have that on there, yep. Alright, so how about the monument signs?
I was thinking the one with the white background, the large one.
The vertical or the horizontal?
Horizontal.
Alright, so the eight foot by five foot?
They get rid of the phone number off the bottom.
Yep.
And then the white background.
I'll tell you, that's, just, just to me, I mean, it's not a bad-looking sign, I just that's more kind of like the Plexi- that's more kind of like the plexi glass look to me, that I think is a little bit dated. I, I think the green with the white cutout is a, is a better look, but that's just me, I, I just think the, the white cutout is, is with the printed letters.
Mike, Mike, which one are you talking about? Can you put it up on the screen?
What's that?
Can you put it up on the screen?
Yeah, I'll put it up, I'll put it up now, see this one? The white essentially is like a plexi with the printed, with, with the letters printed.
Okay.
And it's backlit. This, same thing here, with the tall sign. This, you essentially have, this ends up being the green, when they reverse it, is end up being solid with the white cutout and then backlit. To me, that just looks like a more contemporary updated sign, as opposed to the, kind of the plexi version. And they're, they're both nice signs, I just think this, kind of that look of the one piece with the cutout letter and logo, just looks more updated and contemporary.
Yeah, I agree with that, too, and I like the fact that, at least on the, on the picture he gave us before. Yeah, sure, the picture he gave us before included the phone number and stuff, and having the phone number not on there, like Dale said, is a good idea. I like the sign just fine, the way it is.
Which, which sign?
Sorry, the one you got on the screen right now. Yeah, with the white letters and the green background. Exactly, I like this, I like this the best out of what we've seen.
I would agree.
Yeah, I like them both, either, I like all of them, it's just a matter of what we want to spend, but it would be nice to have it lit.
All right, so just to get, so a, a couple of things. So, just to back up, not that I want to postpone this, I'd, I'd like to move forward, but these are just two mockups, and it's like to, to ask for a whole slew of concepts would be very difficult, but for, for the mockup guys unless that we got feedback from them, like I said, I, I don't think we need anything too fancy, I think this looks, these, all these signs look solid, makes us look established and professional. Like I said, this is my favorite one. It is more expensive, but it also is more involved, it's larger, and it's internally lit. The vertical sign, we could front light with no problem, put some spotlights on it, it would look sharp as well.
The two.
The size and the, the size and the lighting is where the cost comes in, but go ahead, Suell.
The two horizontal signs are the same price, and the two vertical signs are the same price, right?
That, that is correct.
Okay. Yeah, I think I would like to have one that is lit up.
Internally?
Yeah, we're only going to do this one time, and we're going to have this sign for a long time.
Yep, you're right. So the, the, the vertical sign, green background, white letters, internally lit?
Is that the? The horizontal.
I'm sorry, the horizontal, the horizontal, yeah, you're right, horizontal, my mistake.
Yeah, that, that looks good.
It's a nice sign, it'll be easy to read. Yeah, I like it, and again, I stated from earlier, I like it because it's very simple, you know, there's too many signs that I've seen that just have too much stuff on it, you have to actually, you know, stop and actually look at it or something like that. I like a nice, simple sign that says what you want, and I think this one does.
How about, so we would have to get some updated pricing if we wanted to cut out, I have a, a second side to the, to this sign, so what are people's thoughts on having this sign being? Where it would be essentially from the sidewalk? It would be, I have the numbers here, about 15 feet from the sidewalk, not very far at all, makes it about 20 feet, 21 feet from Landmire, very close to the road, without being too close and getting salt and snow and, and crap on it. So, like I said, parallel to Landmire, I think it would still stand out, but again, we would just have to choose orientation of the, the sign. Now we'd have to get updated pricing on the.
I think parallel to Landmire would be more easily readable. It would be possible, I'm sorry, Suell, it would be possible for a person to unknowingly come up onto the sign if it was perpendicular and, and miss it, and end up looking in the rearview mirror, this way, you turn your head and there it is.
Plus, I don't think I want to spend more to have both sides. That would be a lot of money.
Yes, yes.
It's also being facing Tani, too.
It's what?
It's also going to be facing Tani, too.
That's true. Exactly, then it's actually, and there's a stoplight there, there's a stoplight there, too, so, I mean, it's not like people go buzzing by there.
Hold on, it's, it's, it's not going to be facing Tani.
Well, yeah, it kind of will, though, because.
Kind of, you'd be able to see it.
Right.
It's a waste.
Maybe I wasn't clear, like, the recommend, where I was proposing the location was that middle, middle bay window? I just want to make sure we're clear on that.
I think it's different for Tani.
Yeah, I, I just want to be clear, I just didn't want us to misunderstand where, where we're talking about the sign, that's all.
Yeah, I think, I think he meant more that if you're actually coming, you know, northbound on Tani, and right where, yeah, it hits Landmire there, you'd probably be able to see the sign from there.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure we're all on the same page.
Yeah, no, I do, I like that positioning of it, I like it parallel to the building, like Bob said.
Okay.
Okay.
Sounds good.
So, thoughts, so we're thinking, we're, we're okay with having it parallel to Landmire, centered on the middle bay of, bay window of the building, roughly 15 feet back from the sidewalk, which is where you start to get a little bit of leveling out of a portion of the, the landscape, but it gives it visibility from Landmire, and it kind of protects it from the snow and stuff, the slush from plow trucks, so. If that's okay, if everybody's okay with that, then we just have to go back to the post and panel signs.
Just a question, once we order these signs, how long does it take? Any idea?
Um, this has been like, go ahead. Hold on, Paul, Paul has a good point, hold on one second, on the big one?
Signs that are repaid are approximately four to five weeks after final approval.
Okay.
So the big sign they're saying is four to five weeks, but I would anticipate in getting the smaller one sooner.
Okay.
Divine signs, even though they were, I mean, they, they've been responsive, they're running a skeleton crew, too, as well. But I will tell you, can I just give you an update as well? It's related to signs, Suell, I think last meeting you would recommend it, or asked about a temporary sign. So there was something we were going to do anyway, and it serves this purpose. We are getting the food pantry truck wrapped, and then we're parking, we should have that done in the next 10 days or so, is the plan, and then that'll be parked along Landmire. So that'll serve as, instead of buying a separate temporary sign, we figure we'll, something we're going to do anyway, we'll put the food pantry truck in the parking lot along Landmire, and that'll be very visible to the community, let them know we're here, plus the food pantry is open as well.
Yeah, that sounds like a good idea.
All right, back to, and, and I'll, I can keep you updated, once these are approved, I'll keep you posted on the timelines. My hope is that they under promise and over deliver. But back to the post and panel signs. I, I, I wasn't clear, I wasn't clear. Do we want to go with the mockup here? Do we want to see a mockup before we, a different mockup before we move forward? Do you want me to do something different, and then just move forward from there?
Let's see a mock of them.
I'm sorry?
I want to see a mockup of them.
Okay.
Mockup of what?
The post signs.
Yeah, could you put those on the board there? Like. So then we'd order everything but these signs? Hello?
That's, that's what Dale's suggesting, I, I like the signs, I think we should move forward, that's my two cents.
Dale, do you like the signs the way they are?
Eh, I guess we can go with them.
I guess I would rather go with them the way they are than have to do another cycle to see mockups. So maybe we're good, if everyone's good with that.
I'm good with it. I'm good with them, too, I like the, the logo on there, I mean, you got logo on the other sign and everything, too, so it's consistent with the other thing, I like what I see here.
Okay, if, if that works for everybody, I'll entertain a motion to approve the post and panel signs, the wall signs, the large eight foot by five foot solid green with white letter monument sign, and the four door vinyl graphic signs.
Okay.
I'll make that motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second by trustee Saturn, any further discussion? Roll call, please, trustee Saturn?
Aye.
Aye, trustee Nudowski?
Aye.
Aye, trustee Ingraffia?
Aye.
It's an aye, trustee Keenly?
Aye.
It's an aye, I vote aye. Okay, the ayes have it, motion carries, we will move forward on that and let you know of the progress. And let me put up this last item. Okay, this, dealing with Ricky, we got introduced to a lot of the companies, subcontractors, we got introduced to a lot of interesting things and concepts. This was one of the things, this is, I guess you'd call it a sister company to Ricky Office Interiors, is a company called Turf. You have samples of the material, the actual turf, this is made from recycled water bottles, right?
Really?
So the, the company, they do a lot of decorative things like this, they make sound, sound baffles, things like that with this material. But just from a aesthetic perspective, one of the recommendations that they had made, or at least come to us and said, hey, could you, would you mind if we did a proposal? They actually wanted to do some things in the town hall, and I said, you know, maybe we could start at least presenting one or two things to the board and see how the board felt about the design and the material, we'll go from there. So they gave us a couple of different ideas, one was for that kind of blank wall behind the reception desk in the west reception area. One of the interesting things they do, or aesthetic things that they do are plank walls. And they, so they gave us this proposal of a plank wall with these colors, this matte gray, brown, light brown, and green with a silver Elk Grove Township logo. This is a rendering of what that wall would look like, just in their mockup, of generally what that would, would look like. So that's one, and then the other was because we have these big blank walls in the food pantry, and because of the work we do in there, taking our, our tagline, empowering people through community, and putting that, those words on the west wall, upper, the higher portion of the west wall in the food pantry, in the green turf material. So just wanted to bring, they, they had done these mockups, they had asked to present these, so I wanted to pass these along. I thought it was an interesting concept, something a little bit different, I didn't want to go crazy with it, because it is, you know, I don't know, and I think we need to pick our spots from how we do some of the internal design, but I thought these were two interesting concepts to bring to your attention. And with that, I'll open it up to the board and ask for your thoughts.
I like the reception wall.
I do, too.
So do I.
So it's about 2,500 with the logo, approximately.
So, so give you, so to give you an idea, it's on the board here. Yeah, the plank wall is 13, $1,130. Logo, you're right, is 13.65, the food pantry is 18.30, and then the total is 69.37.63, but you, you'd take out that tax, we don't, we don't pay tax, so. So, I mean, 3,600 roughly, what's that? 66, 6600.
Delivery. Delivery installation is 22.45 in addition, right?
Right.
Okay.
I mean, I like the plank wall, too, and I could take her, right now, I think we, we have a lot of things going on, I could, I think it would look really good there, the, the food pantry, the, the turf, the empowering people through community, that's a bigger, I mean, I could take or leave that. Like I said, I think the logo and the plank wall would look good, but I think the, the tagline in the food pantry would look good, too, but I'm not, like I said, I could take or leave that.
Could you, could you paint the tagline on the food pantry wall?
We could, yeah, and, and we had talked about, that's a good idea, of just painting that, and maybe living with it a little bit longer. And there's a lot of this blank canvas in there, so I think there's a lot of opportunity in there, I, I just don't think we've lived with it long enough to, to kind of know what we want to do with it, or how everything's going to be laid out, but I think that's, that it's probably a better way to go, is to paint it at some point, and maybe even do some kind of, even, you know, even a, some kind of different font, as well, something to dress it up, but, yeah, I, I, I would agree, that's probably a better way to go. I mean, the turf is nice, it gives a kind of a depth, but I think if we had a complete plan for that entire space at some point, I think we can incorporate that and, and paint.
Hey, can I ask you, in the, the reception area you're talking about?
Yeah.
So where's the door? That goes, so the door, the door that goes into that reception area there on the west end, right?
So it's behind you and to the right. The, the external, the external entrance is, as you look at that wall, it's behind you and to the right.
And the entrance, is the entrance, does it go out the south side of the building, or does it go out the west?
It goes out this, the south, the southwest.
Okay, so it's, but it's not exactly like the, the same entrance as the other on the east end, right, with that big, huge door? Okay, so it's but it's not exactly like the the same entrance as the other on the east end, right, with that big huge doors? It's a little bit different, right?
It's a small vest, right. It's a small vestibule, right?
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that this mural of the, you know, the thing here, the planks aren't like behind you, you know, or whatever. I mean, you you see it when you come in.
No, you 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 get, I mean, that wall, like you can't help but see it. You have, you essentially walk in, you have the library to your left and that plank, you would have that plank wall to your right and the reception desk right in between. You would.
Okay, okay, good.
It would be a focal point of the room.
Okay, good. That's always.
Ask any thoughts about the the west or the east reception area? Um, no, right now, um. Uh. We have. It's a smaller wall as in the vestibule and as you walk in, you have the TV on the wall there. Um, the reception desk is right there. It's laid out a little bit different. Um, potentially we could do something later, but nothing's jumped out um to do anything there right now. Um, we.
But she had the.
Kedra back. She's the one that helped us with the internal the the interior design, the flooring, the the paint, the furniture. Um, and having her do a walkthrough and um potentially present a plan to the board about just making some nice aesthetic touches to the building, but um not we haven't met with her yet.
Cool. Well, you also have that you also have that cool sign that's built into the desk too. You know, the.
Yeah, we have, yeah, we have the, yeah, we have the, yep, the monitor, the monitor in the desk, the reception desk, yes.
Yeah, so I think you're pretty good on that end of the building. I like it. I like this plank. It's really cool. Good colors.
How does everyone else feel about the plank wall?
I like it.
I like it.
Yeah, I like it too. So this is something we're just gonna put aside for now and consider later or are we considering it now?
No, I was talking about doing this now. I'm I'm I was talking about the other aesthetic touches throughout the building um with Kedra at a later date. Um, but this is something that presented itself. I think it's a nice um touch on that wall. Um, like I said, I figured I'd strike while the iron's hot. This was just presented to us. I thought it gave a really good look. Um, I like the idea of the recycled water bottles. I think that's a nice conversation piece and it's and it's something unique.
Do you know what the delivery and installation would be for just the turf plank wall without the food pantry?
Um, the the best I could probably do is well, I guess it would, I don't know if it would be just take a proportion. I don't know if we could just take a proportion of that number. Um, and 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 look at that. I it's different because I don't know how if it's more labor more labor intense for the planks or the food pantry is because it's higher up on the wall. It's at the higher end of a 14 foot wall. If that's more expensive, but um, you know, I'm trying to think, what's that 20 25 hundred versus 1800? So I'm guessing about a third, two thirds of that number would be just the plank wall. And if I had to if I had to guess, it would be about two thirds of that number, which is what 16, 15, 1600?
Okay. So approximately about $4,000.
Fifteen, yeah, I mean, if you're looking 2,500 plus, yeah, yep, that's what I would guess.
Yeah, I like that idea too. I like the idea leaving off the uh the food pantry also.
What about the food pantry?
I'll leave that off of this for now. I don't need, they needs to be done, but I do like the plank thing and I think we should do the the plank thing now, order it now.
Well, I'd entertain a motion if anybody would like to um.
I'll make a motion.
Make a motion just to approve the plank wall with the logo?
Yes.
I will check it.
Okay, moved by trustee Keenly, seconded by trustee Ingraffia. Any further discussion?
No.
Alright, roll call. Trustee Saturn?
Aye.
That's an aye. Uh trustee Nuredowski?
Aye.
An aye. Trustee Ingraffia?
Aye.
An aye. Trustee Keenly?
Aye.
It's an aye. I vote aye. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Alright, um.
Mike, I'm sorry. I don't mean to be stupid, but you don't need these samples back, do you?
We don't if you but you get a prize if you could tell us that if you could come up with the most creative use of the samples.
Hey, can you make them back into water bottles? No?
What's back in the water bottles? No, but I hear they make great coasters.
Oh, what? That's a great idea.
That's what I'll be using mine for.
I like it.
So, okay, um. So there's nobody here. Um, I'm gonna check to see if there's anybody. I'm gonna stop sharing, see if there's anybody else that's joined us. Um, so hold on one second. We're gonna go into executive session in a minute, so when we go in, if you could stop recording and then come back, thank you. Um, then we'll just stay here instead of trying to move and regroup.
Oh, please.
I'm dying to use that executive boardroom, I think.
Oh, please.
Um, so can I have a motion to move into executive session for the purposes of discussing employee compensation?
So.
Moved by trustee Ingraffia. Is there a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by trustee Nuredowski. Um, do roll call please. Uh trustee Saturn?
Aye.
An aye. Trustee Nuredowski?
Aye.
That's an aye. Trustee Ingraffia?
Aye.
That's an aye. Trustee Keenly?
Aye.
That's an aye. I vote aye. Motion carries. Okay, we'll move into executive. Alright, um, I'll go ahead and call the uh meeting back to order. We'll call the rule. Uh trustee Saturn?
Present.
Hey, present. Trustee Nuredowski?
Present.
He's present. Trustee Ingraffia?
Present.
He is present. Trustee Keenly?
Present.
Uh, he's present and the uh Mike Sweeney, I am present as well. We have a quorum. Okay, uh, I will recap uh what we discussed that we need to vote on uh as far as employee compensation goes. This is on, I'm sorry, yeah. I didn't turn it off, no. Okay, um, so what we discussed uh was to uh one employee, Paul Piyok, uh to be awarded an additional uh $5,000 um in compensation. Uh, in addition, we discussed um all employees outside of the uh assessors department and the highway department to be awarded 2% uh in compensation and uh potential um an additional 2% beyond that, up to 4% based on a employee review. Um, and beyond that, anything that um the administrator, Paul Piyok and myself are recommending above 4% wa would be subject to board uh presentations of the board and approval by the board. That accurately sums that up. So if I can have a motion to approve um that um that employee compensation plan?
So moved.
Moved by trustee Ingraffia?
A second.
Seconded by trustee Keenly. Any further discussion? Roll call please. Trustee Saturn?
Aye.
He's an aye. Trustee Nuredowski?
Aye.
He's an aye. Trustee Ingraffia?
Aye.
Is an aye. Trustee Keenly?
Aye.
Is an aye. Um, I vote aye as well. The ayes have it. The motion carries. We will keep you apprised of the progress on the uh employee reviews and once those are done, all of that material will be made available to you, not only the percentages, but any other documentation you'd like to review. And then um as I said, those uh pay increases would be retroactive back to April 1. Being no other items to come before the board, can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Moved by trustee Saturn. Is there a second?
I second it.
Seconded by trustee Nuredowski. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We are adjourned. Thank you very much.